Good evening and welcome to tonight's Latrobe City Council meeting which is being held at Kernot Hall in Moor. Tonight's meeting will be held with councillors and guests joining us in person. I'm pleased to welcome Deputy Mayor Sharon Gibson, Councillor Potter, Councillor Howe, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan and Councillor Barnes. We also welcome Tim Ellis, our Latrobe City Acting Chief Executive Officer and our executive team. We now move to the recognition of traditional owners and I'd like to acknowledge that we're meeting here today on the traditional land of the Braeakallung people, of the Gunnai-Kernite nation, and I pay my respects to their elders past and present. If there are any other elders present, I'd also like to acknowledge them as well. Moving on to housekeeping, we conduct our council meetings under the governance rules currently in place. We welcome all members of the public attending, both via live stream and in person. I thank you for respecting the protocols of the meeting, which ensure that we can extend the appropriate courtesy and respect throughout our meeting tonight. If councillors could ensure that they raise their hands if they wish to speak so I can see them, remain seated to speak directly into the microphones to ensure that they can be heard within the room and via the live stream, and when voting, raise their hands and leave them raised until I've called their name. We have apologies and leaves of absence. Councillor Lund is currently on a leave of absence and Councillor Campbell is an apology for tonight's meeting. Next on the agenda is item three, Adoption of Minutes, commencing on page four of tonight's agenda. Councillors, do I have a motion? Councillor Gibson?
Happy to move.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Pugsley, do I have any opposition? No, all right, we'll put the motion to the vote. All those councillors in favour? Councillor Potter, Councillor Howe, Councillor Pugsley, Councillor Morgan, Councillor Gibson, Councillor Barnes and myself, I declare the motion carried unanimously. We now move on to item four, Declarations of Interest. Councillors, do I have any declarations of interest? Councillor Barnes?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I do have a conflict of interest.
Yep, is that on item 15.2?
On item 15.2, yes, it is.
Yep, thank you, Councillor Barnes, noted. We'll get you to leave the room when we get to that item which is enclosed. Any other councillors with a conflict of interest? No, okay, we'll move on to announcements of acknowledgements. Councillor Pugsley, you've asked for an acknowledgement.
Thank you, and through you, Mr Mayor, I have two acknowledgements. So I was very privileged to attend the Million Paws Dog Walk, RSP, raising money for the RSPCA on Sunday. That was a fantastic turnout and it was beautiful in the sunshine. My second one is an acknowledgement of last Tuesday, I believe it was, there was a rally in Moor, CBD, around the collection of the, around the levy. And I would just like to say, at a future council meeting, that I will be bringing a notice of motion to support, to see how, to see how we can support our residents with that. Thank you.
Nice, thanks, Councillor Pugsley. Councillor Gibson, I note you.
Question please?
Yep.
Do we legally have to collect the levy, please?
Mr CEO?
Thank you to you, Mr Mayor. I may just defer, if that's okay, to management organisational performance, Mr Kersley?
Yep. Sorry?
If you just could give me one minute, Mr Mayor, just... I do have the answer to that question in my notes, just didn't have a heads up on that to get it ready. So yes, the ESVF is legislated by state government to be collected by council as the collection agency. So it's my understanding, council has no choice but to collect the levy as it has done previously with the fire services levy and then pass it on to the state government.
Yep, thank you for that, Mr CEO. Councillor Gibson, you've got another acknowledgement?
Subsequent question, if you don't mind.
Yep.
If ratepayers don't pay it, then what happens, please? Do we know?
Mr CEO?
Again, I'll pass to Mr Kersley.
Thank you for that question, Councillor Gibson. Through you, Mr Mayor, in terms of the collection of the ESVF, it is the same as the process for collection of the fire services levy. If a ratepayer doesn't collect it, then it goes through the normal debt collection process.
Okay, thanks for that. Councillors, any other acknowledgements? Councillor Morgan?
Thank you, oh, thank you, Mr Mayor, sorry, your microphone. I have an acknowledgement, I want to acknowledge Anne Dyer for her exceptional contribution to the Latrobe Regional Gallery and the arts more broadly in Latrobe City. So after 53 years, Anne has decided to step down as a member of the Latrobe Regional Gallery Advisory Committee. Anne joined the committee in 1972, when I believe her father-in-law was a councillor for the Terrelegan Shire. And he nominated her for the committee. And she's been, yes, on there for 53 years of dedicated service to arts locally. She's been a phenomenal member, she has done exceptional things. And as Tony Hanning said, she was not just a yes man on the committee, she definitely had her thoughts and made them though, as I'm sure she will continue to do. But yes, thank you to Anne for her passionate and dedicated service to the gallery and our community. I would also like to acknowledge Moorwell Bowling Club, who received the Club of the Year Award at Bowls Victorious 2023/24 Awards Ceremony, I think two weeks ago now. And I think that's just a testament to their amazing work in our community and the passion they have for Moorwell, for Bowls, and putting on a good feed as well. So congratulations to them. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge Gippsland Pride Initiative, who hosted a wonderful community lunch, cooked up by the Terrelegan Lions Club, alongside a community pop-up op shop for Ida Hobbit Day. That's in celebration of the LGBTIQA+ community locally. There was a brilliant turnout, lots of friendly faces from across the community, everyone had a lovely time and again, a good feed. So congratulations to them and thank you for putting on another great event locally.
Thank you. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge all the volunteers. It was volunteer week last week and we, some of us went to an event to acknowledge some of our volunteers down at the Moorwell Bowling Club.
Great venue, great venue.
Great venue, yes it was, great, great night too. But there was many more who of course weren't there. And without the volunteers, we couldn't run so many different programmes. We also couldn't do so much with our bushland committees, our rail trails, so many different things. So I'd like to really acknowledge the volunteers and thank you so much for everything they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, Councillor Potter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and through you, I would like to acknowledge the volunteer team that put together the Conference of the Birds in Ballara on Saturday. It was a real celebration of cultures. And you walked along this trail, every hundred so metres, there was another cultural experience, until you got to the meadows. And then there was the full performance and coffee cart and all sorts of things. Wonderful setup. The rain stopped in time, the wind stopped blowing, and it was just a really pleasant evening with quite a crowd. So well done to the volunteers who put that together.
Thank you, Councillor Potter. Councillors, any other acknowledgements? I'll actually make two. First off, I'd like to acknowledge the committee that organised or runs the Stresleki Regional Dance at Stedford, which was held over the weekend in Moorwell at the combined Moorwell School Hall. Fantastic event, from juniors through to seniors. I believe it was starting at, well, I know it was starting at 7.30 because I was there one morning at 7.30, 7.30 on Saturday morning, through till 10.30 Saturday night. 7.30 start again on Sunday through to 11 o'clock Sunday night. High quality dances, very well organised, ran very smoothly. So to the committee that organised that, congratulations. And to the committee, and to the Terrelegan Motorcycle Club that ran the round four of the National MX Championships held out at Terrelegan South. Outstanding event, over three and a half thousand people there, largest crowd they've had to an MX National Championship round. The committee did a fantastic job, the competitors were blown away by the quality of the course. Number of people that attended was just absolutely stunning. Families, younger people, was a great turnout, whole track lined. So to the committee of the Terrelegan Motorcycle Club, congratulations to our events team that helped them. Can I pass on a huge thank you to Kylie and Michelle for the work they put into that? That was absolutely brilliant. And the feedback we got from the Australian Motorcycle Association was that it's one of the best-run events they have been to, not only by the committee but by our events team. So want to pass on our thanks to the team for that as well. That's me done. Councillors, any, any last chances? Going once, going twice? Done, thank you very much. We now move on to public question time. And this is an opportunity for members of the public to lodge a question to be answered at the council meeting, to clarify issues of public interest. Eligible questions received in writing by 12 noon on the Friday prior to the council meeting will be responded to by the CEO, or in this situation, the acting CEO. For tonight's council meeting, we received three questions from the community, and I'll hand over to the acting CEO, Tim Ellis, to deal with them.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and through you. We have received three questions. The first one is from Mr Damien Andrews, acknowledging the audience tonight. So despite officers highlighting the Terrelegan Band Tour funding exclusively benefits members and does not benefit the broader community, council unanimously allocated $15,000. What criteria guides prioritisation between such exclusive benefits versus a Moe Botanic Garden master plan? Also $15,000 that benefits all residents. So in response, the city of Terrelegan Band funding request was reviewed against the Community Grant Programme Governance Guidelines for Council's consideration. The Moe Botanic Gardens funding request has been received as a budget submission and will be considered by councillor at the June council meeting. All grant or funding requests are considered against adopted policies, master plans and existing programmes, and further reviewed against current and forecast budget positions. Second question's from Mr Philip Edwards, it's regarding VCAT case Z1789/2024. A councillor recently confirmed on Gibson Community Radio that ratepayers will incur costs associated with this matter. Questions are, what is the quantum of cost to be borne by council? And second, what action will council take to recover these unwanted costs? In response to both questions, under the Local Government Act 2020, the VEC manages the local government elections. All Victorian local councils have a service agreement with the VEC to conduct the local government elections. It includes that the VEC will manage election-related matters if raised with VCAT. The costs for such processes are borne by the VEC in the first instance, who then seeks cost recovery from the relevant council. Therefore, the VEC managed litigation, the nature of the VCAT case Z1789/2024. Council has yet to receive a formal request from VEC for cost recovery for the recent local election, including any costs for the VCAT case. As such, it would be more appropriate for queries to be directed to the VEC at this time. And the last question is from Ms Taylor Ling. What processes are in place to ensure that those who submit feedback through the community consultation process are in fact real people and unfaked names and email addresses? So in response, when undertaking community engagement, council asks for demographics that are appropriate for the subject matter of the engagement. It is not possible to fully confirm each submission across all community consultation processes. Submissions are required to include certain identifying information. If those thresholds are not met, the submission is not accepted. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Ellis. We move on to our public speakers and there are none tonight, so we'll get through that nice and easy. We move on to item seven, notices of motion, and there are no notices of motion listed on tonight's agenda. So we'll move on to the next item, which is item eight, strategic items for decision. I note you, Councillor Gibson. Next on the agenda is item 8.1, youth infrastructure plan, commencing on page eight of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, are you moving?
No, Mr Mayor, I'm moving an alt.
An alt, bear with me. Councillor Gibson, is it up on the screen, councillors? Councillor Gibson, could you read that for the councillors, please?
The council one, defer consideration of the youth infrastructure plan 2025 to 2035 to a future council meeting to allow for a further review of the plan, and two, that the review includes the projects listed in the 10-year implementation plan and corrects references to New Borough being a small town.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a seconda? Councillor Pugsley? Second, Councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Note, Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please. Okay, the reason for this deferral is that some of the information in the report is actually wrong. As you, as we all know, Moe, New Borough has always been considered the third or one of the three major towns of Latrobe City. City of Moe days, same thing. And in the report, it's wrong. It shows that we have another small town, which is not the case. So we have that. And there's also questions about the, the different projects in the 10-year plan going forward. So that's why I've put the alt up, and we'll see where our councillors fall.
Thank you, Councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, do you wish to speak?
I'll reserve it this time, thank you.
Nice, thank you. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Morgan?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I would just like to say, I will be supporting this alternate motion for the reasons that I have heard concerns have been raised regarding the Terrelegan Youth Activity Precinct and how that fits into the youth infrastructure plan. And I think this will ensure that those concerns that have been raised have time to also be worked through. It's my great desire to see this done and completed and... It's my great desire to see this done and completed and endorsed by council, but I'm aware that there is great community concern about those elements. And just as we have given the Moorwoll Historical Society and the Latrobe Valley Hockey Association a chance to have their concerns heard, addressed and those issues rectified, I hope we can do the same here. And that includes Newborough being listed as a small town. So yes, I will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have any other councillor wish to speak? Councillor Pugsley, you're reserved.
Thank you. I would just like to say that I believe that this plan does need more work to deliver an equitable outcome for all towns. I note that in this current 10-year plan, there is nothing but some wifi for the Moe Escape Park with the infrastructures already in place. So I'd really like to see how we can get some projects for our Moe, Newborough community into this plan. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley. Councillors, we've had speakers for the motion, so we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to item 8.2. Councillor Morgan?
Yes, I would like to move the motion as outlined by the officers in the agenda. Please.
Yep. Councillor Gibson?
I was going to move the alt that I had sent out.
All right. Four and against. All right, councillors, do I have a seconda? Councillor Potter? Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson? Councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. The Community Connecters Programme has been raised in previous meetings here and I think we have all seen the challenges that the Moorwoll community is facing in its CBD. And I'm concerned if we vote this down, yet again, the Moorwoll community will feel that no one's looking out for them, no one cares and nothing is being done to address these issues. What this motion essentially states is that we are going to continue looking for ways to fund the Community Connecters Programme and we will consider allocating funds in the future to help bring this programme to life, to ensure Moorwoll does have something being done to address the issues of antisocial behaviour, to implement a programme that is actually going to do something, that's going to hopefully change the community and yeah, just make a positive change. So this is just for the sort of initial phase of the programme, which is essentially researching further into how it would work and the potential options and outcomes there. So it's not a big ask, it's nothing huge really. So it's a little step we can take as a council to show Moorwoll that we care, that we actually want to do something to turn around this negative view of Moorwoll and to turn around some of these social issues that are affecting people, businesses, everyone in the community. So yes, thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillor Potter, would you like to speak?
I'll reserve, please, Mr Mayor.
No worries. Councillor Gibson, you opposed?
I did, Mr Mayor. Not because I want Moorwoll to miss out, because we're actually already putting programmes in place as we speak. And the shopkeepers are very happy and delighted at some of the progress that's been given. But as you and I know, we met with the Minister for Police recently and he is actively having his staff look at what the best programmes are, whether it's this or anything else, because there's different programmes that have been utilised for different areas in the past. So he's looking at that and he's also looking at how to fund it. So that's why I will vote against this because potentially we have a better offer coming.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Councillor Howe?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And through you. Antisocial behaviour remains an issue across all our major towns with Moorwoll experiencing a noticeable and an ongoing increase in both the frequency and the severity of incidents. This trend is compromising community safety and negatively impacting on the economics sustainability of businesses operating within the Moorwoll CBD. So far, the response to antisocial behaviour has been largely reactive with a primary focus on enforcement. And while enforcement will continue to play a role, it's proven ineffective in delivering long-term social improvements. Without a shift towards preventative long-care, long-term strategies, the current situation in Moorwoll is unlikely to improve. Police have acknowledged that this is an issue that cannot be resolved through arrests alone. Moorwoll cannot be policed out of its problem. The Community Connecters Programme has demonstrated strong results at the Downing and Frankston train stations, implementing a similar approach in Moorwoll holds the potential for comparable success. This programme addresses the root causes for antisocial behaviour, including mental health issues, substance abuse, social isolation and offers a more holistic and sustainable solution. I acknowledge the programme isn't cheap, $790,000 over two years, but continuing with the current approach would only yield the same ineffective outcomes. I think a new direction is needed. Tonight, we're requesting a consideration of $50,000 to fund the initial research and the planning phase of this programme and to continue to advocate for further support from both the state and federal governments as well as potential partners such as Vline. Let's take the first step towards making our community safer for both our residents and for the many visitors to our city. I support what councillor Gibson's view is, securing full funding for this programme would be an ideal outcome. This motion proposes that the $50,000 is considered as part of the end-of-year budget review. That's scheduled for August to September this year. That's three or four months away from now. I'm saying if we can't, in three or four months, if we have no external funding confirmed by that time, let's draw a line in the sand and make a firm commitment to allocate the funds and begin the planning. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe. Do I have a speaker against the motion? Speaker for the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Potter, you're reserved.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I will speak now, if that's okay.
Yep.
Okay, so I don't think we can wait. Every day we're seeing incidents happen in the Moorwoll CBD. We know that's driving away shoppers, we know that's driving businesses out of the town. And we just don't have time to consider and wait and hope that the, you know, ministers can come up with some additional funding for us. So I think we have to be proactive in this space and I think we have to move this forward and at least get it started so that then when they do say, what are you doing so far? We can say, well, we've put in an investment, we've made a change and that we are doing this to find out what we can do to actually encourage this. And I know our state government actually likes you taking that initiative and showing that initiative before they start handing out their funds. Just the other day, on one of the current affair programmes, they ran a little snippet, it was only about three minutes long, on the Community Connecters Programme as it's running in Frankston. And they were talking to a homeless woman who had been homeless for 13 years until the Community Connecters Programme started. And then they were able to intervene and she is now safely living in a home for the first time in 13 years. So just that impact alone, I think, is incredible. Imagine that, every day, people being out there and intervening and being able to bring those resources and connect those people to the services that they need. And she, the lady they were interviewing, actually said, normally when she sees do-gooders coming round, she doesn't speak to them, she doesn't disclose, she doesn't talk to them. But this time, she did and it had such a big impact on her life. We can be having those impacts straight away here in Moorwoll and we can really see that this is going to improve the quality of lives of people within Moorwoll, but also the shoppers, the visitors, the tourists that we're trying to attract in. We're going to be bringing in more storeholders, once they feel safe to do that. So I just don't think we can wait for state government. I think we need to act now and I think we need to be allocating this $50,000. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Potter. Councillor Morgan, would you like to close?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I completely understand councillor Gibson's concerns, but I think, first of all, Moorwoll has missed out time and time again and we need to rectify that and stop letting that happen. But I also want to say that this motion is not a hard and fast commitment to putting money into something. It's simply asking that we continue to advocate for funding and that we consider in the future allocating funding at the end of the year in our end-of-year budget review process. In doing that, we can still engage with the Minister for Police, we can still have those conversations, we can still raise this in various different ways and look at other programmes. This isn't a hard and fast commitment. I think as councillor Potter did mention, this is a sign that we are actually wanting to invest, that a good faith that we do care and we will put something in or consider putting something in so other organisations, other levels of government are more likely to invest in our community. So I would love it if you would all vote yes, vote for this motion because Moorwoll deserves it. It's not an investment into anything yet, it's just us continuing to advocate. So thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan. Councillors, we've had speakers, we'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Morgan, all those opposed? Councillor Pugsley? Oh, councillor Pugsley, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion defeated. Councillor Gibson, I note you.
I'd like to move the alt, please.
Yep. We could get the alt up, please, and if you could read it to the council, please. Councillor Gibson?
That the report be deferred pending receipt of feedback from the Victorian Minister for Police and Minister for Community Safety, the Honourable Anthony Carbins MP.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillors, do I have a seconda? Councillor Pugsley? Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. I'm not against what the others have stated, but I am against locking us into this if it's not the best programme. If we weren't already doing programmes on the street as we speak, very different story. But we already are and we're already getting traction on it. So as I say, if it wasn't for that, different story. We have had the discussion with the minister. He is, and he said to us that he will actively look at the best programmes available and then sourcing funding. Now, we are in a very tight position funding-wise, like everyone else. Why would we say no to that? I would hope that we hear, if it's not next month, that when we go and do our delegation to the state parliament in July, I would hope that we would have answers by then. We also had a roundtable with Minister Shing and looking at not just policing, all of the different issues that has people homeless and with the different issues. So between all of it, I hope we can actually get a really good outcome for not just Moorwoll, all of our area that has this problem. So that's why I'm really keen to put this forward and to see exactly what programme we can get put in place to ensure our residents are safe and our shopkeepers can have a viable business. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
I'll reserve it this time, Mr Mayor.
Reserve. Nice. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Councillor Howe?
I just think that we need to put an end on, an end date on this alternative motion. We need to say something like, if we haven't heard by September, if we haven't heard by October, this is an open-ended motion like this, we may never actually do anything.
You're asking for a deferral councillor Howe?
Well, I'm asking maybe an amendment, saying if we haven't heard, if we haven't heard by, pick a date, if we haven't heard by the end of September, we need to re-look at this.
Answer an amended motion. Yep. Mr CEO, can you seek clarification on how we proceed from here?
Sure. Through you, Mr Mayor. Shall we defer for a couple of minutes and then we can work up what an amendment would look like if councillor Gibson is amenable?
Yep. No, I think it goes through the mover and seconda, it doesn't have to go through them. It's councillor Howe can move an amendment if he wants to and then he needs a seconda once we've got an amendment organised and then we take a vote on that. Then we go, if that's successful, it's accepted. If it's not successful, it goes back to the original and we'll go from there. All right, so we can take a five-minute adjournment and we'll be back shortly. Alright, so we can take a five-minute adjournment and we'll be back shortly. Good evening and welcome back to Latrobe City's council meeting. We apologise for the short break. We now move to an amended motion and just to fill the gallery and those watching on live stream what is about to happen. We will now take a vote or we'll have a mover and a seconda to amend the motion. If that vote is successful, then the amended motion becomes a substantive motion and then we debate that substantive motion. So the first vote will be to accept, basically to accept the amended motion. So councillor Howe, are you happy to move?
Ah, yes, through you, Mr Mayor. I wish to move the amended alternate motion.
Yep, and do I have a seconda? Councillor Morgan, do I have any opposition? Okay, councillors, councillor Howe, do you wish to speak?
Oh, just very briefly, you can see the intent of what I'm trying to say here. We're providing an opportunity for the state government to come back with some option and with some possible funding. What it's showing to the Moorewell community is that we do care and we are going to address this in the September meeting. And it sort of puts a full stop on everything, it's just hanging out there. It means that this is going to come back and a decision will be made at the September meeting.
Nice, thank you, councillor Howe. Councillor Morgan, did you wish to speak?
Yes, just briefly, just to echo what councillor Howe has said. I'm comfortable with this amended motion. It gives a clear framework and deadline for when we would bring this report back to council so it's not being lost in decision-making by the state government. So, yes, I'm very happy to second this amendment.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Councillor wish to speak for the motion? Councillor wish to speak against the motion? Amended motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Okay, so councillors, we're now going to put to the vote to accept the amended motion to become the substantive motion. Alright, councillors, who's in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried. We now move on to making the amended motion the substantive motion. Do I have a mover? Same mover and seconda? Councillor Howe, do you wish to speak?
No, nothing more to add to what's been said. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
No worries. Councillor Morgan, did you wish to speak?
Yes, please. I'm just glad that this is back on the table and that Moorewell will not be missing out and we will hopefully get some really, really good results and some investment into our community to hopefully deal with some of those very challenging social issues that the Moorewell CBD is currently facing. And I'm in support of anything that helps to solve that problem in a socially just and community-centric way. So, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Morgan. Councillors, do I have a speaker against the motion? I know. Do I have a speaker for the motion? Do I have any councillor wish to speak? Yep, councillor Gibson?
I'm happy to support this motion. I would actually have hoped that the motion or the information coming back from the minister would actually be earlier than this, but so I have no problem at all with this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Okay, councillors, we've had speakers, so I'm going to put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to, I want to get my paperwork organised. Item 8.3, note you councillor Gibson, reduction of litter in public space commencing on page 69 of the agenda. Councillor Gibson, do I have a mover?
Happy to move.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Moving. Do I have a seconda? Councillor Barnes?
I'll second that, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. Councillors, do I have any opposition? Do I have any, councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Just quickly, Mr Mayor, I'm happy to move this because we all know we have such issues with litter, I was going to say something else, on our roads. A lot of it is on the regional roads Victoria or what we know as Vicroads roads. And for us to actually go and pick it up, we can't just do that. I've tried to get our officers many times to allow me to go and pick it up, but we can't do that. We have to get permission off Regional Roads Victoria and there is a huge rigmarole to go and actually pick up the damn rubbish. So I'm more than happy to do this and I'm hopeful that these measures will be more successful and we will actually have a cleaner, cleaner city because it needs it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillor Barnes, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, through you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I think the rubbish over the last few years, I think a lot of the volunteers are getting around, picking up a lot of rubbish around the place. I reckon it's starting to improve. I know we've had a few incidents and stuff, but I think it is starting to get a lot better and the more volunteers they get in each ward, the better it's going to be. I've noticed along our rail trail, it's always nice and tidy. People are walking along, picking up the rubbish if they see it. So I suppose if everyone does a little bit of that every now and again, it'll make it a nicer place.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? No, councillors, we'll now put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to item 8.4, endorsement of council support package round two funding submission commencing on page 80 of the agenda. Councillors, do I have a mover?
I can move that, Mr Mayor.
Move, councillor Barnes. Thank you. Do I have a seconda, councillors? Councillor Potter? Thank you. Do I have any opposition? Councillor Barnes, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. What I'd like to endorse is this item on stage two of the support package with the Commonwealth Games coming along. And I think with this package, it can assist different things and different programmes. So I think it'd be a great thing for Latrobe Valley to put this forward.
Thank you, councillor Barnes. Councillor Potter, did you wish to speak?
I'll reserve, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Reserve. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Potter, you've reserved?
Thank you. What I actually wanted to talk about with this is, just since the council agenda was released publicly, I've just had a lot of people concerned that the toilets in Churchill have come back up on the agenda. And so I just want to clarify that, you know, we're taking this opportunity to put the toilets into this funding body. This means we're still going to get our toilets, it's still had the money allocated, there's no difference around that. So the funding has been secured, but it's in unallocated funds and it's been set aside for the project. So we are getting the toilets. So, but the commitment remains in place. However, you know, if we can actually get the funding through on this round of these submissions coming through, then that previously earmarked unallocated funds can then be used on other important projects within the city. So this is a smart use of resources and it's still a win for Churchill and the broader municipality. So, you know, it's not a delay and it's not withdrawing of the funding, it's just looking for other streams that we can actually use to pay for that. So I fully endorse this one and the projects that are all within this support package.
Thank you, councillor Potter. Alright, councillors, we've had speakers, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to statutory planning, sorry, my apologies, item 9.1, statutory planning decision-making commencing on page 94 of the agenda. Sorry, councillors, councillor Howe, moving?
Happy to move, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Moving councillor Howe, do I have a seconda? Councillor Pugsley, do I have any opposition? Councillor Howe, would you like to speak?
Ah, yes, absolutely, thanks for turning through you, Mr Mayor. This motion stems from a notice of motion raised at our December meeting, which asked officers to review and identify options to streamline the planning application process. The current delegations for the, for planning was adopted back in 2014 and they were detailed in the accompanying report, so I won't go through them. Following the review of the delegations and also some benchmarking against other councils, the following key change is proposed and that's the automatic trigger which requires planning applications with more than five objections to be removed, to be decided council meetings will be removed. This change is expected to enable a more timely decision for all stakeholders. Applications currently referred to council could see an estimated time-saving of between three and five weeks. And while this only affects around one or two per cent of the total planning applications annually, it will still be 12 to 14 cases per year and the impact on those specific applications will be substantial. And importantly, the councillors will still retain the ability to call in any application for decisions at council meetings if they believe this is in the community's best interest. That part of the process won't change at all. Councillors, we'll receive weekly planning reports to providing visibility over the status of applications and that will include the number of objections, so we'll still be right over it. And what's important is also is that the motion includes a provision for a follow-up report to be presented into council after 12 months. So this will allow us to review the effectiveness and the appropriateness of the updated planning delegations and to assess the outcomes for the trial period. Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Howe. Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, and through you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to support this item as I believe that this strategy aims to enable council officers to make quicker planning decisions. Any method that can be made to make our process quicker and essentially making it easier to do business with and in our council has my support.
Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Councillor, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put the motion to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. We now move on to item 10, corporate items for discussion. Item 10.1 is electric vehicle charging infrastructure on council land. I note you councillor Morgan and then I note you councillor Potter. So it's the 10.1 electric vehicle charging infrastructure on council land policy commencing on page 105 of the agenda. Councillor Morgan?
Yes, I would like to move the officer's recommendation.
And councillor Pugsley?
Thank you, I would like to second the motion. Thank you.
No worries. Thank you, councillors, do we have any opposition? Okay, councillor Morgan, would you like to speak?
Yes, please. I'm happy to move this motion. This motion will, if accepted, will see council adopt the presented electric vehicle charging infrastructure on council land policy. This policy provides a clear framework to guide third parties and guide their requests to install electric vehicle chargers on council-owned land. And this is following, following on from increased requests for the installation of electric vehicle charging infrastructure from both companies and also users of facilities. It's not particularly exciting, but it gives that clear structure and framework to allow council to accept those opportunities and to look at what is needed. And it puts us in the right direction in terms of future-proofing facilities. Electric vehicles are becoming a lot more common, people need places to charge it. Yeah, I support this and I hope you all do too.
Thanks, councillor Morgan. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
Thank you, briefly, through you, Mr Mayor. I move that we adopt this policy. This policy will enable Latrobe City to stay innovative and sustainable by having policies in place to encourage the investment needed for electric charging facilities.
Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillors, we've had speakers, so we're going to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item 10.2, CEO delegation to award contracts for Ted Summerton Reserve redevelopment regional sports infrastructure programme commencing on page 117. Councillor Morgan, councillor Morgan, councillor Pugsley, I note you.
Thank you, I'd just like to move it. Thank you, through you, Mr Mayor.
Yep, and councillor Gibson?
Seconding, please.
Seconding, thank you. Councillor Pugsley, would you like to speak?
Through you, Mr Mayor. By delegating authority to the CEO, this will ensure that we can keep the project on an acceptable delivery timeline as well as keeping the displacement and inconvenience of user groups to at least, to the least amount of time as possible.
Thank you, councillor Pugsley. Councillor Gibson, did you wish to speak?
Reserved, please.
Reserved. Okay, councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Gibson, we're back to you, you're reserved.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm happy to support this motion. I'm happy with what the motion's actually for, which is Ted Summerton, the reserve and through this, through the money from the Commonwealth Games, we will actually have a much better facility there, so more than happy to support.
Thank you, councillor Gibson. Councillors, we're going to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we move on to item 10.3, note you councillor Gibson, governance rules commencing on page 123 of the agenda. rules commencing on page one twenty three of the agenda councillor Gibson I noted you are you moving?
Moving the alt please.
An alternate? Alternates up councillors councillor Gibson could you please read that out to our gallery and councillors?
Okay. The council one adopts the changes to the governance rules as follows and outlined in attachment two. A under rule twenty two notices of motion. One remove subrules twenty two point one point three twenty two point four and twenty two point five. Two change the the value limit in subrule twenty two point seven point two to ten thousand dollars. B under rule sixty seven petitions. One in subrule sixty seven point four remove that are submitted through an approved council e petition facility. Two notes with the adoption of these governance rules that any previous versions are now superseded and three makes the governance rules available on council's website and available for inspection at all council service centres.
Thank you councillor Gibson councillors do I have a seconder? Councillor Pugsley? Councillors do I have any opposition councillor Potter? Councillor Gibson would you like to speak?
Yes thank you mister mayor. Okay. Right. What I'm putting forward is to take out a lot of the red tape if you like that was put in through the CEO. As you know the CEO is our employee but what was put in place actually had him telling us what we could and couldn't do. So if we had a member of the public come to us or members of the public come to us with issues in the past we were able to put the motion up before council. If it wasn't any good of course it would get voted down. Now all of the the points that I'm putting forward to be taken out takes the decision of the CEO away essentially. Now there are checks and balances still in there. Now one of the the checks and balances was about the expenditure because if we and fair enough if we didn't have a check and balance there and there was say ten notice of motions and each oh sorry each one effectively was a hundred thousand dollar hit to the budget. Ten of those there's a million dollars so no I've said that no keep it in there but change it to ten thousand. Inflation does hit so that's why I've done that. I'm just watching for the time. Oh thank you okay and with the petitions right most state government and councils have that you can use e petitions. Now we we're here for the community and we want to hear from them and petitions are one way that they actually address us and raise their concerns so we want to make it as easy as possible not through our portal that we have to do. Thank you mister mayor. Oh okay no worries I'll keep going then okay so taking away the the council's e portal makes it easier for members of the public to put a petition up to us and I think you know we're supposed to be there to listen to them so that's why I'm saying okay take that away so they can put petitions in thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson councillor Pugsley did you wish to speak?
I'll reserve for the moment thank you mister mayor.
Thank you councillor Potter you opposed?
I sure did. Let's not be misled by this this is exactly what we took to the public. This is what I went on the have your say page to get the community's consultation around these exact things that councillor Gibson has brought forward to us again today. And this is not so I'm deeply concerned that we've got it back here looking exactly the same. It's not just about the content but it's about what it says to the community and that is your voice doesn't matter. Over the past months we've asked our community to participate in the consultation progress regarding these governance rules and they did with clarity with care with conviction. Over forty eight valid submissions were received seventy seven percent opposed the changes to the petition. Eighty eight percent opposed the changes to the notices of motion. This isn't a small margin. This isn't a divided community this is a clear and overwhelming rejection of the proposed changes and yet despite that we're now presented with an alternative motion that disregards the community's concerns. And let's call it what it is this alternative motion is a decision to silence our community. Over on the petitions seventy seven percent of the residents were crystal clear they do not support the introduction of e petitions from external unverified platforms. They want a process that is accountable transparent and fair and run it on council approved systems. And on the notices of motion the message was even louder eighty eight percent of the community made it clear that they expected accountability. They demand that councillors justify why a notice of motion is being raised and any financial or resourcing implications that it may actually have. This alternative motion is a calculated move to push through an unpopular change despite overwhelming public opposition and in the end we send a chilling message to our community that their input is just performative and then ignored. We're telling our residents that consultation is just for show that decisions are predetermined and the public input is an inconvenience rather than a guiding force. If we pass this motion we're not only amending the governance rules we're eroding democratic representation at its core. We're choosing to shut the community out when we should be drawing them in. To support this motion is a betrayal in the very trust that brought us into these seats. I urge my fellow councillors to reject this charade. Listen properly and return with changes that reflect the will of the people that we are actually here to serve. Anything less than this is just a failure a breach of our duty. Thank you mister mayor.
Thank you councillor Potter councillors do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion councillor Howe?
Oh yeah thank you mister mayor and and I'll speak through you. I'd like to begin by acknowledging the overwhelming feedback that we have received from our community regarding this proposed changes to our governance rules. Forty eight submissions and as councillor Potter said seventy on the petitions seventy seven percent rejected any changes notice of motion eighty eight percent were against. With such a clear and one-sided response I think it's difficult to justify proceeding with any changes. Our role is we're representing our community and that is will that this mistakenly in favour of maintaining our current governance rules. It's also important to note that the local government of Victoria has advised that the model governance rules are expected to be released in December two thousand and twenty five with the initial consultation having already commenced in April. If the proposed changes were endorsed tonight it will again go out to the community for consideration before coming back to a council meeting likely at the end of August or September and then only to be changed again two months later in December. Our officers have also benchmarked other existing governance rules against those of other councils to ensure that we're aligned with best practice. Key findings are most councils allow supporting information to accompany a notice of motion. Around half admit the CEO to refer a proposed notice of motion to another process. Many restrict notice of motions that would result in significant unbudgeted expenditure or alter council policy and a minimum requirement of name and address for each petition signatory is the standard practice. I was also briefly addressed proposed changes to the notice of motions which I believe will undermine transparency. Removing the background justification from a councillor's notice of motion takes away context that is crucial both for our community and for fellow councillors to understand the intent behind the motion so why is this removed? Eliminating officers' comments which outline budget implications internal resources alignment with the council plan and existing work deprives us all of vital information needed to make an informed decision. Again why is this being removed? And finally the numbers speak for themselves twenty three versus seventy seven on petitions twelve versus eighty eight percent on notices of motion. It's pain as day our community has spoken and I think we must listen. The path forward is clear let's retain our current governance rules thank you mister mayor.
Thank you councillor Howe do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion councillor Morgan?
I just want to echo what some of my colleagues have said. I speak against this motion. I do note that councillor Gibson has said and I paraphrase that we want to hear from the community. I'm concerned that we are ignoring the community with this. We received forty eight valid submissions to the have your say survey. That's not an outrageous number but it's on par with a lot of other responses that we receive. It's it was overwhelming in those numbers that people didn't want to see a change happen. I also note that the reduction of red tape has been mentioned in this argument and many others tonight. However these our current governance rules were only adopted on the second of October two thousand and twenty three. They were then taken to a council meeting on the fifth of August two thousand and twenty four. It's had to go through so many processes of community consultation being brought back to council being reported on. There is no need to continue this and as councillor Howe has mentioned we are getting model governance rules likely by the end of this year which will then have to go out to consultation as well. And I fear that we are just bombarding the community with governance rules consultations again and again and again and again and even when the community tells us quite clearly what they want or do not want we're just going to ignore it anyway. I don't quite see the point of that. So I very strongly am against the motion before us. I share fears of lack of transparency with the removal of the justification and again the community has said no even if it is only forty eight submissions it's still a clear no from the people who care enough about it to have their say. So I would strongly encourage all of you my fellow colleagues to vote against this. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Morgan councillors do I have a speaker for the motion against the motion? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Pugsley you're reserved.
Thank you and through you through you mister mayor. I am hearing what my fellow councillors are saying. It was forty eight people that did respond however when you look at social media the last two instances where our public our residents wanted to petition us for something they used the change.org platform. Obviously because they find it easier. Well Latrobe City is one of the few councils that doesn't accept the change.org petitions however this is one of the most used platforms. Most online e petition users have signed a petition using change.org or something similar before whether it's petitioning our local state member or federal member. Latrobe City is one of the few seventy nine councils that don't accept the platform. By using this platform I'm confident that our residents will find it easier to have their say. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Pugsley councillor Gibson we've had opposition did you wish to close?
Yes please. Okay we talk about feedback now there's three of us here who have been through this process in thank you for the dates in two thousand and twenty three and two thousand and twenty four and the feedback we got was not to change it and to keep it what we're trying to put back in. So as for overwhelming feedback it was in support of what I'm putting forward tonight. Now valid submissions well that's interesting that some of those are valid or not. Now it's it speaks about the state government and model rules and yes I I take note that they're supposed to but I say supposed to come back to us at the end of the year. Now we know from past experience what they say and when they actually bring it to us isn't always the same. So how long do we wait? How long have we not listened to our community in what they want? So do we put that aside and wait for the state government or do we actually listen to what they have said over two years and put this through or not? Transparency it said that this we won't be transparent at all. Well actually this is where we're transparent in front of everybody so whether the CEO does or doesn't say anything this is where it matters where we speak in front of our community. So if anything it's going to be more transparent because if it doesn't stack up it will be voted down and we will have to answer to our community. So I would suggest that all of the grounds that I've just spoken that people I would ask for support thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson councillors we've had speakers we're going to put it to the vote all those in favour? Councillor Pugsley councillor Gibson councillor Barnes and myself those opposed councillor Potter councillor Howe councillor Morgan I declare the motion carried. We now move on to item eleven urgent business. Councillors I have not been informed of any urgent business and neither has the CEO is there any to be raised from the floor? Nope okay we'll move on from item eleven. We now go into items for noting. Item twelve point one is public availability of councillor briefings commencing on page one fifty one of the agenda councillor Gibson I note you.
Moving please.
Thank you councillor Gibson do I have a seconder councillor Pugsley? Do I have any opposition? Councillor Gibson would you like to speak?
Yes please. Given that I was the councillor who put this forward just before the last council election I sort of firmly feared that I I'd get up and move the motion. Now we have got another council who's actually doing all the work and oh sorry and getting all the information for us so basically what we're doing is we're waiting for that information to come back before we make a decision but it'll be an informed decision that we do with the information thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson councillor Pugsley did you wish to speak?
I'll reserve at this time thank you mister mayor.
Okay councillors do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillor Pugsley you're reserved?
Thank you. I believe that public transparency is extremely important and we want to get the process right by waiting to see the results from other councils that are undertaking the same process will save us money and come up with a better process. We want a process that is easy to implement and cost effective value for money for our residents.
Thank you councillor Pugsley councillors we've had speakers we'll put it to the vote all those in favour? Councillor Potter councillor Howe councillor Pugsley councillor Morgan councillor Gibson councillor Barnes and myself I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors we now move on to item twelve point two contract variations for the period January one two thousand and twenty five to thirty first of March two thousand and twenty five commencing on page one eighty nine of the agenda councillor Howe I note you.
Yeah wish to move thanks mister mayor.
Councillor Howe you're moving councillors do I have a seconder councillor Pugsley? Councillors do I have any opposition? Councillor Howe would you like to speak?
Oh just briefly thanks mister mayor through you. Our procurement policy requires that we provide a summary of contract variations and including tonight's agenda is that summary along with the detailed information covering summary, along with the detailed information covering each of the variations. Uh the key figures are, council currently have 198 contracts with variations to thirteen of them, representing 6.6% of total contracts. Uh a total of thirty-one variations were approved during the quarter. Twenty of those, thirty-one, were within the original budget, project budget. Uh ten variations or thirty-two percent resulted in a credit back to council. Uh one of the variations outside the project budget related to the signalised intersection on the Trelgama Maffra and the Marshalls Road, this was necessary due to additional work required by the Department of Transport and Planning and changes to the public lighting and traffic signal design between the tender stage and the final approved stage by Osnet and the Department of Transport and Planning. Um the report outlines the type of each variation, provides the details for the, for transparency. I'll particularly note the credits, um that's in there, the ten credits. These highlight our ongoing efforts to find more efficient and cost-effective ways to deliver projects and to deliver better value for our community. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Sorry, I put this microphone on, works a lot better. Thank you councillor Howe. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
No, thank you. I believe my colleagues really has covered it.
No worries. Councillors, do I have a speaker for the motion? Speaker against the motion? Any councillor wishing to speak? Councillors, we'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, we now move on to item 14, items for tabling. There is one item in the section which is item 14.1, tabling of a petition. Under section 67.9 of the governance rules, no discussion or debate will be entered into when a petition is tabled, so we'll move straight to the vote. Councillors, do I have a mover? Councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, are you seconding? Morgan? Councillors, do I have any opposition? No. Councillor Pugsley, did you wish to speak?
Just briefly, thank you, uh, Mr Mayor. Um I'd like to, um, by moving this motion allows the petition to progress to the next steps, um which is important for our processes. And that's all I've got to say.
Sorry, I just realised councillors, that there's no debate on this. So we'll move straight to the vote, sorry. Thank you, Mr CEO. Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself, and myself putting my hand up, declare the motion carried unanimously. Councillors, now we move to meeting closed to the public to consider confidential information. Under section 62, 66.2A, the Local Government Act 2020, councillors, do I have a motion to conclude the open portion of the meeting and close the meeting to the public to consider confidential information? I note you councillor Gibson.
Happy to move.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Do I have anybody? Councillor Morgan, I take it you're seconding? Thank you. Any opposition? Any councillor wish to speak? Councillor Gibson, do you wish to speak? Councillor Morgan? No. Councillors, we need to put it to the vote. All those in favour? Councillor Potter, councillor Howe, councillor Pugsley, councillor Morgan, councillor Gibson, councillor Barnes and myself. I declare the motion carried unanimously. Thank you to those watching online and to those in our gallery, thank you for attending. And we look forward to seeing you at our next council meeting. Thank you very much.